It's me, of the Gadsden City Council, and I come to order when the chair calls on. City Clerk Oliver Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
Eccles.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Councilman Cannon is absent today. Councilman Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Harris to lead the invocation today. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. In heaven the Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to gather here to make decisions for the citizens of Gadsden. We ask that you be with us and lead us and guide us and make sure that those decisions that we make are in keeping with your commandments. Be with us, lead us and guide us, and we will continue to give you all the praise. These blessings we ask in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in council meeting held on July 31st.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of July 17th and August 2nd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proximations. Mayor's office. Unfinished bid as we have none. Number nine is a resolution awarding bid number 3214 to Traffic Logic Corporation. This is for the materials required for speed cushions in the amount of $6,350. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Yeah, I don't think so, because I was going to discuss it.
How about, well, engineers, please, let the public know what you're talking about. We're talking about these speed cushions.
Yeah, this is in accordance with our traffic calming ordinance that was voted on approximately a year ago. There's, of course, a process to go through to have these installed along a neighborhood road and parameters that have to be met, such as volume and speed and things like that. But this bid is to have us something to go on as far as budgets go, to know when we have those that qualify, how many we can do in a particular year, and how much to budget for.
Could you also tell us how many neighborhoods have applied and how many are approved or what's the status of them?
Yes, sir. I checked before I came down here. I believe we've had 23 applications at this point, and that 10 have qualified based on the parameters. But now, there's not a street that's gone through the full process yet simply because we didn't know how many we were going to do in a particular year. But we'll now move forward with that process as well.
Okay. Okay, 10 is a resolution authorizing amended agreement with Jones, Blair, Walram, Tucker. This is to include construction, engineering, and inspection services on Phase One of the Stroud Avenue drainage project, and the amount is $16,000. The Edgeworth County Commission has agreed to pay one-half the cost. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. This is still part of the drainage problem that we have on Stroud Avenue, that the city and the county has gone in to make sure that we start to correct our drainage situation on Stroud Avenue. It is a joint venture between the city and the county, so we expect work to start on that in the very, very near future.
You mean, you mean Gadsden is in Edgeworth County?
Gadsden is located centrally in Edgeworth County.
Oh, I'm glad they finally realized that.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The first reading is an ordinance. Patrick and Carol Stout have offered $3,000 for property located at 70702 and 704 Slack Street. This ordinance was presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President, since we have the check in hand already, I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this this morning.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'll ask for passage, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is a couple of vacant lots, or actually, three small vacant lots that the city's been cutting grass on and maintaining, and we're always thrilled to see these go into offer our maintenance problem, and some citizens pick those up. So if anybody has a vacant lot next to them that the city has interest in, please step up and make an offer, and we'll make you an offer that you can't really beat. So, give us one of these lots, and we're glad to see this move.
You said the check is in hand, it's not in the mail?
It's in the vault.
Okay, alright.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider Resolution 298. It's authorizing agreement with Conry and Associates for conducting an organizational and Fair Labor Standards Act compliance assessment for the Gadsden Fire Department.
Second.
Have unanimous consent.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
So I move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is for a study of all aspects of the fire department operation, including overtime, handbook, and so on and so forth.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President, that's been a concern, I'm sure from the administration, and of course, I do get printouts every week as Chair of the Finance Committee of overtime, cost, and a number of other issues, and this has been a major concern. I think we've talked about it before in this council, but the overtime is a major concern. I think this year they had budgeted $700,000, and I think they're probably going to exceed that, and I understand that they requested $900,000 in next year's budget. That's quite a bit of money for overtime. I'm not sure if we don't come out better by hiring individuals and committing to pay insurance and everything else that's supposed to be overtime, because they keep saying it's cheaper to work overtime, and I'm not so sure if that's the case, particularly when it starts costing you a million dollars a year in one department.
Well, let's set the side of the coin, Robert. You know, we hire more people, got to pay benefits, but I think after this study, we can pretty well see which one's going to be the best.
That's why we got the study. That's why we're requesting. I don't know.
And just for the sake of the general public, I mean, this is not something that's unique to city government. This is kind of an ongoing debate, whether you're talking private industry or city government, whether or not to staff up to meet your minimum staffing needs, or stay at a lower level and pay overtime to meet that volume demand. So, this, again, to the point that both these council members have made, it's just something that needs to be studied, and I don't want to miss in this discussion the fact that there are some compliance items that we want to talk through as well, and make sure that the city's in bounds relative to the Fair Labor Standards Act. So, it's a good exercise, you know, I wish we could do it for free, wish we could do it in-house, but I don't know that that's a reality for us, so we're going to have to house source that.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business? Citizens request, Regina Talton, retiree insurance. Please come to the microphone. Leave your remarks to five minutes, please.
Turn your mic on, here somewhere. There you go. Thank you for letting me address you again today. I'm not sure I need to be under citizens' request, more than unfinished business, so that's why I'm here. Of course, my name is Regina Talton, and I'm the spouse of a retired firefighter. I have spoken with you individually and collectively on the issue concerning insurance coverage for the younger spouses of the retirees. I am here again today to ask you to take action and make adjustments to ordinance number 0-32-12 for the younger spouses of retirees before it is too late. Time is running out. As of October 1st, 14 younger spouses of retirees will lose their medical coverage. Later, 34 others will be affected when their spouses turn 65. Here are some of the facts I'm sure you're aware of. Financially, the city is in very good shape. In a Gadsden Times article on July 22nd, City Finance Director Lisa Rosser reported to the mayor and to you councilmen that overall revenues are up 3.6% for the year, which amounts to $1,249,635. The city's personnel costs are under budget by 4.4%, and operating costs are under budget by 9.1%. You gentlemen are to be commended for your stewardship of our tax dollars. You are doing a great job. The city of Gadsden will realize another savings of approximately $250,000 with this ordinance. It would only take a small portion of this savings, about $70,000, to make sure that these spouses are covered. The city will still realize a huge savings of $180,000. This situation would not be permanent. All 48 of us will eventually be phased out when we reach 65 and can go on the Medicare Supplement Plan with our spouses. In my case, I would only need to remain on the insurance for 11 months. Some will need the insurance a little longer and some a little shorter amount of time. The thing to remember here is that this will only be temporary, and the city will save money and reach the goal of the ordinance at the same time. You should have all the information you need by now to make a decision on our situation. If you do nothing and allow the ordinance to go into effect, you will be placing us in an impossible situation. Most of us, because of age, or pre-existing illnesses, and exorbitant premiums, cannot get coverage elsewhere. Don't throw us under the bus just so the city can save another $70,000. Gentlemen, it is time to act, and what is your answer? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Talton. Tommy Hudson, Mooring Roadside. Please leave your remarks to five minutes. Please state your name and address of the city.
Thomas Hudson, 1555 Scenic Drive. Good to see all y'all again. I wish it could be, well, it's not that bad. Here's my problem, y'all. Y'all know I came over here sometime back when the spraying company the city contracted sprayed scenic drive up and down and killed everything up and down the road, and I complained about it, and they found out that they mistakenly sprayed it. And I said, "Well, in that case, I'll just sue them." And I was told by a commissioner, "Well, just don't talk about it, just sue them." Well, that's what I did and won. And I bought $750 worth of wildflower seeds, that's what I asked for, and planted them up and down scenic drive. And it was beautiful till the drought got them. But here's the problem. Scenic Drive has not been mowed this year. I mean, and I've got pictures here, that, here's one picture where the kudzu is covered, the road on one lane is five feet, and I went up there this morning as I was driving, and since then, I think both lanes are down to 11 feet. I mean, it's like, there's no road left, and that's the only access off the mountain. And one lane, if that's not a hazard, I don't know what is. And here's another picture of one weed they're growing right on the side of the road, that's seven feet tall, and here's another picture where the weeds are taller than my pickup truck, the top of my pickup truck, which is six feet. And y'all can look at those, and it's all the way up and down scenic drive, and I thought, "Well, what they're doing is they're just, somebody's mad at me because I..." And by the way, that company did pay up, and without any gripes, and they seem to do a pretty good job, and I'm not gripping at the company. Will Clay was the judge, and I'd like to thank him. But that being said, there comes a time, and I know the city's trying to save money, and I do appreciate that, I really do, but there comes a time when you have to spend a little money, because you can't let road sides just grow up to, you might as well live in the jungle. I mean, you know, it's powerful, but the city ordinance here says that you have to, if an area that's previously maintained has to stay maintained, and if a property owner lets his property grow up over 12 inches, the city can hire a contractor to mow his lot and then charge him for it. So if the city's been maintaining these road sides, and by the way, it's not just scenic, it's all over the city, because I got out and rode, and I feel sorry for the poor guy mowing, because he, I don't know, must not have one person on a Yazoo or something mowing, because the whole city's grown up. But if the city can, if you don't mow your lot, and it's been previously maintained, and the city can charge, that can mow it and then charge the property owner for it, can not the citizens of the city charge, power somebody to mow the roadside and then charge the city, because they've previously maintained the roadside? So if it's good for the city to sue the property owner, then it's good for the property owner to be able to collect on the city, because the city's not doing their job. And if we've got all this money saved up, then by golly, maybe we can spend a little of it on mowing road sides, and I don't, you know, that's not fair to the property owners up there to have to live like that. And another thing, I just wanted to say, if the city's out of money that bad, which I don't think they are, but if they are out of money, the budget for the golf course was $1,128,738 was the projected budget for the golf course. Well, I know dues will pay some of that back, but the fact of the matter is, it won't come near what it costs to run the golf course. No city golf course makes money. Sell the golf course and mow my roadside, and that's the way I feel about it. I know y'all, some of the councilmen play golf, and I can appreciate that, but I just don't appreciate y'all not mowing the roadside. The city looks like a dump, because y'all don't mow the roadside, and all the neighbors up yonder say the same thing. When I told one of them what I was going to do, and she said, "Good for you," I'm tired of looking at it. You know, and hey, it's, you know, what is it? I just, mow the roadside, you know, and if you want to play golf, pay for it yourself. And by the way, congratulations on the holy one, Billy Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson, we've missed you. Okay, remarks by the mayor and the council. Ben, you want to start?
Well, I might as well, since it's all in my district he's talking about. For once, Tommy, since I've known you, I would love to see you do one thing. Call the State of Alabama and say, "Why don't you cut Albert Raines Boulevard?" Call the State of Alabama and say, "Why don't you cut Megan Boulevard?" Because we're spending how much time down there cutting Megan and Albert Raines and not cutting scenic drive? That's where our problem is. We don't have enough people, we don't have enough machinery, after all this rain. I cut my grass three times in the last week and a half. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
We're mowing the State of Alabama's stuff while ours is going uncut, okay? That's just one problem. And then the rain comes along, and it goes, how many people out there have cut their yard in the last week? You know they have, they've cut it two or three times. There's no way in the world with 400 yards that people who are darn sorry and won't mow their yards, that we have to mow those also, okay? That's a problem. But I'm going to tell you something, if it's in front of my house or in front of my property, I believe I can cut it. How much property are you on up there? I'm going to go deeper, because I'm going to burn a bridge now.
That's all right. Let me ask you a question, I'll tell you how much I own. I probably got a quarter mile of road front. I weeded every single foot of it just the other day, and I keep it mowed, and if I don't mow mine, the city will come up there and mow.
Absolutely.
So if you don't mow yours, then you get somebody and charge the city to mow yours, because if you can do it to me, then I can do it to you.
Absolutely. What I'm saying, I'm asking, and you can get hot all you want to, but brother, I can go back to 94 with you, big time.
Mr. President, how much longer we going to let this go?
We go this as long as I want to, right here, because I've been fighting this battle about State of Alabama, and I need help on that. We're talking about cutting yards and cutting right of ways, and we're spending all our money on Albert Raines Boulevard and Megan Boulevard. But after this meeting, we're going to go back to 1994, 95. I'm not going to say it on here, I will there, okay? If I still got a little time.
I guess you got all the time you want.
Thank you.
You're still a city councilman?
I think so. On a lighter note, I haven't seen a coyote in my yard in the last four weeks. Evidently, we've run out of cats and dogs and gardens, so they have moved on, and I want to make an announcement that I hadn't seen any, so Peter can quit calling me and writing me letters to tell me that I want to join their save the coyote situation. That being said, the longest yard sale was a big success this week. We had a real good time up there, I think the sellers did, the buyers all the way from here to Kentucky. And Chief, I want to commend your people, the walking people up there. We had police officers on bicycles that did a real good job of keeping the order and so on and so forth, so to them, I'm very appreciative. That's all I had, and Tommy, I want to see you at the meeting.
Yeah. Very interesting morning this morning.
Go get more interesting.
I know some of the retirees are concerned about the changes we've made in the retirement system, but we look around the country and see Stockton, California, 300,000 people, bankrupt city, about five other cities are right on the verge of it. I see the city up in Pennsylvania, everybody went on minimum wage, and the mayor on down. So, we're living in some scary times. We made a decision for the long haul for the city, for the city of Gadsden, I think, made the right decision, but we are concerned about some that fell through the cracks in this thing. We're not heartless, we understand that there's some people that we need to do something to help them through this time, so we're concerned about that. Another thing that, sometimes people come up here and talk to the council about, "Why don't we do this? Why don't we do that?" You know how many employees the council employs that were not over there, that's all. We have no control over any of the employees of the city. We have a mayor who is in charge of that, in charge of the daily operation of the city, so you're really speaking to the wrong group when you come up and demand us to do something. We do make policy, and that's part of what we do, we watch the budget, that's part of our job, but as far as day-to-day operation of the city, we have no control over that. That's all I got to say.
Robert?
Absolutely, we do, we are the legislative branch of the city, and we pass them, and we don't look at one special interest group that we pass for, we look at the city as a whole. There's close to 40,000 of us, and we consider everybody when we pass our ordinance.
Let me say that...
Wait, wait, wait.
Let me say that...
Beg your pardon?
But it does sound like you have a statement that says you only go to a certain extent. I just hope you're sure.
No, I said we do not control the employees of the city. We have no control over the employees of the city.
And with that in mind, I am registering a complaint, because, like you say, we don't have control. I've had quite a few people calling, I know it's the weather, and I asked them to bear with us. We've got overgrown lots, to the extent in my district that I'm probably getting a call, if not, on the average, of one an hour. I'm getting quite a few calls about the overgrown lots and the grass, and I know it's been the weather. I hope that's what it is, and I think Mike Ashley is not here. I mean, John, but I said Mike, that's the other Ashley. But John is not here. He might be out cutting grass, I hope. I talked with him, and he told me they were behind, and I see where they've been over in my district this morning, I rode around, so hopefully they're going to be over there. So, people in my district, I think they're in our area right now, being, I don't know when they're going to get to yours, or nobody else. I'm hoping that they stay over there and get most of the lots cut, because I've had a lot of complaints. Couple other things here. The employees, you know, again, when we looked at that issue, we had a company that come in, a professional company. I thought we were helping most of them when we gave them a stipend, a couple hundred dollars. Inevitably, people fell through the cracks, so we've asked the administration to look back at that and see what we can do. I didn't realize how many people we had, I understand, I missed the numbers, I think it was 40-something that's coming up, or will be. I don't know what's the cutoff, Ms. Talton, you talked about that, that's something we need to talk about. I think when we first looked at it, there was about 13 people we thought was in the critical positions, and I understand that there's 20-something or 40-something, and so where do we end? And that's what we've got to look at, and we've asked the administration to come back with a report for us, and we have yet to get that. I understand that they're still working on it, or, I don't know, have y'all completed? Are y'all still working?
We're in contact with both the consultant and the state employees' insurance board.
Okay.
We're getting two different 180-degree each other's answers.
Well, I just want them to understand that as a council member, as a legislative body, we can't make a haphazard decision without some information, and that's what we're waiting on. And I want them to understand that it's not the council. We're waiting on that information, and when we get that information, hopefully this council will make a decision that'll be beneficial to everybody out there. Couple other things that got going. Chief, I didn't get a chance to speak to it upstairs, there was a shooting on Tuscaloosa Avenue Saturday, or Sunday morning. Had to be Sunday morning, because I was there Saturday night. Happened to go down there, and so it had to be around 12:00, midnight or afterwards. And I noticed there was quite a few young people out there. I do know that that was first Saturday. They normally stop around 9 o'clock at night, and there was hundreds of kids out there at midnight. For the life of me, I understand why they were still out there, or allowed to be out there. Been any other time the police would have come down, broke them up, and I guess they just wait till they shoot, and then they go down and break them up, or whatever. But when those events end, then I think there should be some policing in that they should be moving on, as opposed to hanging around and creating the disturbance and the problems that they do. So, I would hope that they would look at that next first Saturday, or any other event that they have. When those events are over, we would ask that the police come in and move those crowds on, so we don't have the incident like we had Saturday night or Sunday morning. I made a commit, well, I didn't make a commitment, I made a statement at the honoring our two former Gadsden City Titans High School football players who are now playing pro football. They're going to be playing next Thursday night in Atlanta. The Hawks will be playing, I mean, not the Hawks, but the Falcons will be playing Cincinnati. As you know, Drake or Patrick plays with Cincinnati, and Jerrel is playing with Atlanta. I talked about a bus. Well, we've got a bus, so if there's anybody who wants to go, there's going to be a bus going. The first 55 people who contact us can go. After that, I'm not sure what we're going to be able to do. After that, I'm not sure what we're gonna be able to do. Uh, I understand this, people are calling and lining up pretty fast. The total cost for the trip is gonna be forty-five dollars. That includes round trip plus the ticket to the game. I understand that that's a pretty good deal. So if you know of anybody who wants to go, they need to get in touch with me like yesterday. Uh, you can reach me at, uh, two five six five four seven five zero five eight. Leave a message, let me know how many people you want, how many tickets you want, how many spaces you want. Uh, they're going pretty fast. Uh, it's gonna be interesting to go over and watch, uh, the two former Gaston players play. So if you're interested in going, we need to know that, know later than probably tomorrow, Thursday, because we gotta make the final arrangements by Friday. So whenever we get the, uh, first fifty-five people on board, then we're gonna cut it off. So, uh, please ma'am and please sir, if you're interested in going, give us a call. The, the last thing I want to do is, can I do a commercial? It's not a paid commercial.
Never has bothered you before.
It never has bothered me before, has it? Okay, well, let me do it anyway. Um, it's, it's, it's a political thing, but it's not a commercial per se and it's not, uh, anybody running for office. But, uh, Commissioner Parker, eh, eh, and myself, we're both delegates to the Democratic Convention and there's a fundraiser going on for Commissioner Parker. Commissioner Parker, I mean Commissioner Parker has some cookies for sale. So if anybody interested in, uh, buying some of these cookies, they can see Commissioner Parker. And I might have a few too. But anyway, uh, these are souvenir boxes for the Obama campaign and, uh, anybody interested, get with Ms. Parker or, or see me and I might have a few boxes myself. Do I have to pay for that one?
I think you ought to. I have, I have a few, uh, Romney boxes myself.
I'll buy one.
Later on this afternoon.
I'll buy one.
In fact, I got all his tax returns I was gonna have on display.
I would definitely buy, I would definitely buy those.
So, uh, if that, if that will trump Obama's deal, I will carry on.
Well, maybe we'll swap, how about that?
There you go, give me those, I'll give you some.
That'll work.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Um, just a couple of quick things. I want to thank the folks who had very good attendance at our District Two meeting on last week. So I do want to thank those folks who came out. Uh, thank the Police Department for supporting. Uh, there's some, um, some, um, interest in a neighborhood watch group in, uh, in the East Gaston portion of District Two. So the officer stepped up and supported that activity and I do appreciate that. We had a very good meeting. We solved a lot of the world's problems in about two and a half hours. So, uh, really excited about how that went. Uh, grass cutting, I was gonna, before all this happened, I was gonna actually, uh, request that John give us an update, uh, next week if he can. Simply because obviously the, you know, we've got the perfect storm, you know, and that, no pun intended, but perfect storm, uh, relative to weather conditions as relates to grass growing. So we, we deal with this one every year and, and, and Councilman Stewart is correct. I mean, it's from a personnel standpoint, as a council, we don't have a whole lot of latitude. Uh, I think we just saw, uh, a councilman in, uh, Anniston go to jail, uh, or at least get detained for a, a, a period uh, because he overstepped his boundaries relative to personnel issues. So we're a legislative body, don't have a whole lot of control over personnel issues. So, you know, please be mindful of that. We're, we're built to receive the concerns, so continue to give them to us. Uh, but in terms of being able to force city employees to do something, we just don't have that latitude. Uh, and, you know, I haven't been to jail and don't plan on going. So, uh, you know, again, just please be mindful of that. Uh, and, and with the city of Anniston in mind, uh, you know, I just do want to remind each of us. I mean, we have a good council here, I think. Uh, we're not, we're not perfect, but we have a good council. But I do want to, you know, remind us to, to, to maintain the, the, um, civil protocol that governs the way we do business. I wanna, and I also want to warn us about, uh, engaging and responding to open audience conversation, uh, and commentary. You know, while, while this is a public meeting, uh, there, 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 there is a protocol that we have to follow. And, uh, and I think it's dangerous, uh, especially in the climate that we function in right now. Um, you know, you have to look no further than Oak River, Wisconsin and Aurora, Colorado, before you realize just how overheated, um, a lot of our public venues are and, and just a lot of the discourse is right now. So we don't necessarily have the latitude to entertain too much of that. Uh, especially when it results at one council member pointing his finger at another one. I, I think we need to be very, very careful as it relates to that. The last thing I have is Handy Chapel AME Church, uh, will be conducting a leaders' recognition, uh, event on Sunday. Uh, and, uh, of course, all the members of the council and the mayor have been invited. Uh, and I think that starts at one thirty on Sunday.
One thirty.
So, uh, those of you who are interested in that, please, uh, you know, please plan to attend that on Sunday. And that's all I have.
Can, can I make the apology downstairs? I did it upstairs to the, the pastor of the church.
To downstairs?
Let me do it here, yeah.
You mean downstairs?
Yeah, can I do it here now?
She's not here?
No, she's not here, but can I do it to the public right now? I'm sorry, I didn't do it, if that's okay. I, I, they planned that meeting when they talked to me around my schedule because I, I stay on the road a lot. And my wife happened to look at my schedule and she saw an open date, an open weekend, and tomorrow's my birthday. And so I got a big surprise. I'm going to Disney World for my birthday. I'm taking my three grandchildren. So that's my birthday party at present. And I won't be here Sunday. So I want to apologize to those individuals who I told I was gonna be there and I know they planned it so I could be there. Uh, but, um, it looks like my grandchildren and my wife in Disney World is gonna have me on Sunday. So I apologize.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first of all, uh, Councilman Williams, you're, you're absolutely right. And I, I appreciate the way you, uh, elaborated on what responsibilities we have as a council and, and what obligations we have and how, and what, and what responsibilities we have and to what degree we have latitude in advising, uh, city employees, uh, on particular issues. I, I, I'll go back to one of my district meetings that I had, uh, back earlier in the year and, uh, we had Public Works Supervisor there, Mike Hilton was there. And he told, he was very specific, uh, when he stood up and told the people in District One, uh, no disrespect to Councilman Harris, but I don't work for Councilman Harris. I work for the mayor, Sherman Gaiden. That's my boss and he can, he's the only one that can tell me or give me directions on what to do. Councilman Harris can't tell me not one thing to do. Now, that being said, we do have requests that we issue, we issue from you, from us, to the mayor and to different departments to try to get things accomplished that you find necessary and that we find necessary to be done. But let, let me, you know, let me just reiterate. The bug stops with the mayor as far as city services are concerned. Yes, we are very concerned about things. Uh, I'm concerned about the same situation that we are all concerned about and that's grass cutting and mowing and everything in, in my district, just as well as, uh, we are in other districts where we have that problem. And the problem seems to be more prevalent in areas where we don't have sidewalks, where we have gutter, where we have drainage ditches, you know, and we don't have gutters and we don't have sidewalks, you know, but we have. So those are the more prevalent areas that we need more attention to. And Devick, I'll go one step further. You were gonna ask John to give us an update, uh, next week on where we are on grass cutting as far as lots are concerned. But we're gonna, let, let, let's, let's, uh, send that on to Public Works also. Let's ask them to respond, to come here next, uh, Tuesday morning and give us an update on where they are, Public Works, on mowing, uh, period, uh, anything that they have to do. I think that would be in everybody's interest if both of those people were here to give us an update and tell us where they are as far as the one issue. And that's all we're talking about is grass cutting in the city. That being said, violence is running rampant in these United States. We, we, we're in terrible shape. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna preach, but it, it, you can see that there's something missing, you know, here in these United States. And I don't know what it is. Violence, the, 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 the week before, you know, we had an assault rifle, you know, some guy with an assault rifle with a hundred clip magazines and stuff like that. Uh, you know, and, and, and we call for more gun control because, you know, you know, you don't need a, a, a rifle with a hundred clips in it, you know, to, 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 to protect your home or to be here at home or to go out to the rifle range and shoot or whatever. Those things were said. The latest event was a nine-millimeter semi-automatic handgun. Nine-millimeter semi-automatic handgun, semi-automatic handgun which held just a regular clip, maybe nine or ten rounds, but it had three clips with him. So, you know, it begs to ask, uh, uh, we ask, is it gun control? Or is it just the people who are using the guns? I don't know. I don't know the answer, but something is wrong in these United States where we settle our differences with other people by going in and killing them. Something is wrong when we have an event, you know, on a Saturday night, you know, and it ends up with gunfire, you know, and somebody getting shot. Something is wrong there. I don't have the answer. But if, as long as we don't address the problem, it will just continue to escalate. And so I, I, I think it's up, it, it's up to us to address it. And in that, in that, in that, uh, in that vein, I'll tell you that, uh, New Liberty Tabernacle Appraisers is having an event. Now, let me just plug this for them because this is part of what we need to try to help us resolve our problem. They are planning a community conference on August the nineteenth and eleventh that focuses on the family. This conference is entitled Parenting God's Way. Targeted especially to the parents and youth of this community. A special event for the youth will be celebrated Thursday and Friday. On Saturday, Back to School Rally will be held and we desire to bless several youth with gifts and things. This is at New Liberty Tabernacle Appraisers on each row, nine twenty-four each row, on the ninth, tenth and eleventh of this month. Now, this is a community thing and this is based on families. And I think Minister Reginald Thomas is heading up this, this program. I understand his wife is here today with us in the audience. And, and, and also, um, Reverend Simmons is here, who is the pastor of New Liberty Baptist Church, who is in New Liberty Tabernacle Appraisers. I just want to say, this is, these are the type things that we need for our youth and our families to try to help us get through to the next, to, to the next generation, to, to the present generation also. So I, I encourage you to participate, um, in, in, in this program to the de, to the degree that you can and get, show our support for our community. Show the, show our support for our, I have, I have a, I have a handout here and I'm sure Pastor Simmons and, and Mrs. Thomas will have some more that they'll be glad to give you after we dismiss here so that you will be able to participate in this as much as possible. And like I said, the Handy Chapel event, like Devick said, the Handy Chapel event is one thirty, uh, this coming Sunday. Handy Chapel is, is over on Rogers Street in the, in, in, in Robert, Robert Avery's district. And, uh, the reason that it was, uh, the reason he was invited because he lives in his district, but he won't be there. So all the community, it's a community rec, recognition for all the leaders of it. Uh, 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 and we're gonna recognize leaders. And this is a thing that, that, that will be instrumental in letting our families and our kids and our people in our community know who those people are that you can go to when you have needs of services, when you have need of, of, of support. And these people, these are the people that you can go to. So please, uh, all those leaders that were invited, please, uh, plan to attend that, 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 uh, community outing. They'll have slight, uh, small refreshments afterwards, but it's, it's, it's something to get to know the people in your community, excuse me, that you can call upon. Thank you.
Mr. President, I do want to agree with Billy in his assumption about the one gun. I do, Billy, I agree with you. But I got to say, the man with the one gun, if somebody in that audience had had one gun, it might have stopped the whole thing. So that's my whole philosophy on that. Not assault, ramming, killing a whole lot of people. But I'm gonna protect myself. And I'm also gonna answer objections when they come up here in a loud way. Ain't no doubt about it, Eric. Ain't nobody gonna run over me to a certain extent and I'm gonna stop.
I, I agree with you to a certain extent, Ben, but the guy down in, uh, Colorado had all that armor on and I don't know-
I'm not talking about him.
Well, I understand, but I'm just saying, it just depends on where you are and what's going on, so.
Yeah. Well, the gun didn't kill nobody, he did.
I know.
But this guy last week didn't have any armor either, Dan.
I understand.
Let me, let me make, clarify something. I may have given the wrong impression when I was talking about we have no control over city employees. If you have a complaint in my district, if you have a concern, call me like we've always done. I'll make sure that your complaint gets to the proper people who would handle that. That's the way I handle it. And I have a good work, working relationship with all our department heads. And if you have a concern, call me, certainly, I want to hear from you. And I'll see that your complaint is, is passed on to the people who can correct it. So, uh, just want to make that clear.
Bill, in, in addition to that, uh, I always emphasize the fact that we're gonna have a meeting in District One every month i- i- as long as I'm able. And one of the reasons that I have, we have that meeting, not I, we have the meeting, that one of the reasons that we come together there is to disseminate information to, 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 for us to receive your concerns and take those concerns back to the people who are responsible for making a decision. And I think we've done a pretty good job of doing that. Uh, sometimes, you know, they say, well, you don't, you don't need to have a meeting every month. Yes, yes, I do in my opinion. Because I get different, different information from different people every time we meet. So I can pass that information on to the mayor, to department heads, so that we can try to get something accomplished. A very good point, Ben, very good point, Bill. So continue to, continue to support us in those meetings. I know Devick enjoys having his meeting, two and a half hours, whoa! But, uh, we, we invite you, that's why you need to be there, so that we can give you information. And also, department heads, the police department, you know, the chief, uh, the mayor's office, all are, are represented at those meetings. So I encourage you, whenever there's a meeting in your, in your area, to come out and attend it.
I'm worn out. I never say anything because there's so much said before. Anything that anybody wants to know about what's happening in the city, all they gotta do is watch television. It comes on, what, every four hours or so?
Three hours.
And, uh, for an hour, you get to hear all kind of, uh, things that are happening in all the districts. I've, I've preached for a long time. Nobody ever pays any attention to what I say, so I've got to the point where I don't say anything. I just listen to all this and it's, it's just like the mowing. Mowing the, the vacant lots is one thing. Mowing in front of your house is something else. It's your responsibility to mow the right of way in front of your house. Uh, it's part of the law. I'm not saying that, I'm not talking about, uh, the state has a right. They, they don't mow anything, I don't think anymore, very little if anything. It's, since nineteen ninety-two, I've been preaching about what we're doing on the benefits. And here it is twenty years later. And, uh, we're trying to keep us from going bankrupt. And we're, we got, we got money, yes. But what, what's gonna happen to us five, ten years from now when we're not spending it? You gotta spend money to make money and we, in my opinion, have not done what we should have done. But then everybody loves the fact that we're saving all this money. But you gotta pay for it someday. And the thing about it is that if we stuck to what the federal judge said was a fair situation when we passed it in nineteen ninety-two, we wouldn't be in this shape. We wouldn't be in having to, uh, somebody having to, uh, try to figure out what to do for these. And I agree, it's terrible that, that it's come to this, that, but something had to happen. No question about it. And hopefully we'll be able to do something about, uh, your problem, Mr. Tolton. I, it's, it's, it's a bad situation and maybe we'll be able to work something out on that. The problem is, right now, it's thirteen. What's it, every year it's gonna be, it's gonna be some added to that for the rest of, for, from their own. So, uh, we're trying to get the thing in, in some kind of order where what we have done, how many, how many millions of dollars do we, uh, the future, that we're in the whole?
One, a hundred and-
A hundred and something million dollars that this city is, in the future. We're gonna have to start registering that on our books. And that's because we have, uh, done the same thing with the, with the retirees and the insurance and everything. the insurance and everything. And the actuaries say we're 100 and something.
114 million.
114 million in the hole. And it's come to the fact, I mean, Robert was one of the ones that, uh, absorbed all that $300,000 at a time that the insurance went up.
I've voted for it, Bob, and I don't apologize. You're right. But I realize now we got to pay for it.
I know. I mean, I would, I would love for us to have the money to do that, but we didn't have the money to do it.
I know, but I didn't realize I was going to be around when we had to pay for it. No, no, I'm kidding. You know, I mean, but, but, you know, being a working man and coming from that, that arena, Bob, I, I just couldn't see passing that on to the work. Because we didn't pay people enough. We still don't pay people enough in this city. But anyway, that's another story. We, we just got to come up with some way to pay for it, that's all.
Well, we pay a lot though in benefits.
Yeah.
If we paid the money to them and let them do it, it'd be a different situation anyway.
I agree.
Anyway, I hope we'll be able to work something out. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some of them.
[music][1763.88]